But I want to say twenty total participants have transferred to TDOC. As you know, a lot that come into our facility end up having to be transferred to a prison. So, I'm not able to track them. And thirty-four are not released yet as of that date, June fourteenth. Our final total is seventy-two released, trackable participants with twenty returns. This is a twenty-eight percent recidivism rate. We are at a seventy-two percent success rate among our men. That's saying a lot, ladies and gentlemen. But we need a little bit more time to get even more realistic numbers. As far as from our female program participants, as of June fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, there's fifty-six total program participants with nineteen returns. Eleven total participants transferred to TDOC, so I'm not able to track and include them in this study. Our final total is thirty-eight released, trackable participants with nineteen returns. This is a fifty percent recidivism rate. This is a fifty percent success rate. So, right now, those are the raw numbers that we have. I also want to share about our electronic monitoring program that we have. And briefly, I'm gonna have Chad share in just a second. But the main thing that I'm interested in is how much are we saving right now? And according to these numbers, we are saving fifty, uh, just shy of fifty-six thou-- we have saved just shy of fifty-six thousand dollars. So, that's what we're looking at. Chad, do you want to share anything?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the commission for making the investment in this in September two thousand fifteen. As Mary Ann said, the program's been a great success so far, roughly around, I believe, eighty-seven percent success rate. Saved approximately fifty-six thousand dollars. We hope those numbers will continue to go up. So, really, just like to thank you for your investment, and it's just a really great program that we're having a lot of success with, so.
Thank you very much. I'll have a couple of more people that I wanted to be able to share on, and I want to say this. Mira, would you please come up with Ridgeview? Mira has been an incredible, incredible lady representing Ridgeview since I've been working with you for how long now?
Um, almost a year and a half.
Almost a year and a half? And I'll tell you, she's been amazing, the support that she has provided and the follow-up on the outside, and she's gonna share just a little bit about that.
Yes, so, I'm Mira Patel. I'm the criminal justice liaison from behavioral, Ridgeview Behavioral Health Services. So, basically, my job is to kind of bridge that gap between jail and mental health services or addiction. And I'm telling you, the amount of inmates that have requested to go to treatment since I've been there has grown substantially since I've started. And I think the reason why people have changed their mindset is because of these groups. Because people won't want to change unless they have something showing them that they can change and it will be something positive. And they don't learn the coping skills, so when they get out, they're just gonna use again, they're just gonna steal again, or commit the same crime they did before, when they came in previously. So, it's very important to learn those groups. And the amount of people have, that have contacted me on the outside has grown too. I will say, when I first started, I was getting maybe two or three people who I worked with in the jail contacting me a month. Now, I get maybe three or four contacting me a week. I will say, even today, I just met an inmate at my office, and I got him connected to services. And I think that all of that is possible because of the groups. People are wanting to go to treatment, people are wanting to change. And it's just a community thing. And I thank you, Mary Ann, for doing this, and I don't think it would be possible without the groups in the jails, so.
Thank you.
Okay, no problem.
And I'd like for, um, I'll tell you, I want, Dawn, I want you to say a couple of things that I want Nancy to... Listen, this right here, go ahead and stand up, people. This is why we do this, right here. This woman right here is why we do this. Dawn, would you like to share a couple of minutes about your story?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Melissa Dawn Davis, and I'm sitting here, and I'm looking at this great, uh, this great presentation Director Young is using, and I'm thinking, wow, what if they'd had that when I was a charter member in the county jail? Because, yes, I am a recovering drug addict and alcoholic, and I have graced, I've been booked in there forty-something times, and I've been clean almost three years. And so, when I went away to treatment for a year and a half, and I come back, I thought, well, I want to give back what was so freely given to me, but I want to do it in the county jail where I served all my time. And with a lot of, uh, little bit of work, I was blessed to be able to do that. And I go in there every Friday, and I talk to these ladies, because when these ladies come into the field, in the facility, gentlemen, they are broken, they have no self-worth, they have no confidence. And so, now, they have these great programs they can go to now, they can get their GED, they can, you know, learn about housing, and unfortunately, they didn't have that. I'm not saying that I would've had some epiphany and went and got clean and sober, but that seed would've been planted. And that's what I wanted to do to these ladies. I want to let these ladies know, you know what, you are somebody, you are worth it, because if this alcoholic and drug addict can turn their life around, you can too. And they're very receptive, and they talk about the other programs that are in the facility, and it's just a great thing. I'm honored, Director Young, for you to ask me to speak tonight, and I'm honored to come into the jail. Thank you, gentlemen.
Nancy?
I represent one of the volunteers. I have been going to the jail in October, I'll start my fourteenth year. I started in ministry with an inter-denominational, non-denominational team, where our focus was to share the redemptive love of Christ, the restorative grace of Christ, and that through Him, all things are possible. I have to tell you what it was like when I first started. You've come a long way, baby. When I first started, the girls would sit around, and they would talk about what they were gonna do when they get out, what kind of parties they were gonna have, what kind of drugs they were gonna use. There was a lot of focus of bringing their life, their street life, into the jail, talking about what was going on. And the few that wanted to do better, they would come and they'd say, help with, uh, get us into a rehab. Well, I was trying to help with the rehab, someone else was trying to help, we were working at cross purposes. Our intents were good, but we weren't having success. And I had one girl that I was so sure that I was going to get into rehab, I had all the financing, everything worked out. And I'm sure you all know this, but if you don't, I'm gonna share it with you. You know, our laws are made so that you serve a specific amount of time. And so, if you have to serve nine months, now, nine months is so many days and not any half-days. So, the hour that you are picked up is the hour that you are released. And if you're a woman coming out of the jail at 1:00 AM in the morning, and you've burned all your bridges with your family, who do you call to pick you up to the jail to take you for housing? You got any idea? Your drug dealer. This was the girl that I had everything set up with for a two-year program, and she was so excited about going, but getting out in the middle of the night, her drug dealer picked her up, and in two hours, she was high as a kite. That is the environment of that time. That's no longer the case. The girls now who are serious, I work with women, obviously, the girls who are serious have now developed strategies of what to do so that they don't fall into that trap. Not only do I, am I involved in a ministry team that meets on Thursday morning, but I'm also one of the volunteers that co-teaches Going for the Goal. And this is a class that helps develop a plan, a life plan, in the areas where the traps are, their jobs. Now, the first thing they talk about when they, about the job, and we look at the different things about it, they say, well, when I get out, I'm gonna go see Tanya Randolph. Or, I've already talked to Mira Patel, and I'm going to rehab, she coordinates all the rehab, I'm going to rehab, and I'm going to Nashville, I need to get out of this area, I need to get away from all of my old friends. So, when I went, there was very limited help for the women. In fact, we were working at cross purposes, and the people that they listened to most on advice of how to navigate the legal system, how to get in rehab, how to make it all happen, was inmates who were looking at it through their own experience lens. That's real authority. That's real authority. Such bad advice. It's not that way anymore. That's not that way. The women today have help, they have the tools. I've been to the graduation, they have a support system now when they get out. It's so important to have a support system. I watched, not just mom and dads were there, in some cases, mom and dads weren't there at graduation, but it was an aunt, it was a friend, it was people who had supported them, and I saw so many tears shed. These women now have hope. I'd like to share two or three things about the hope. Do you remember seeing in the paper, the picture of the inmates, the female inmates that had graduated from the MRT class? Well, I went in right after it was in the paper, and I saw on the wall of the, of, what do you call it, pod, the unit, where the women were, and one of those women came up to me, and she said, come over here, I want to show you something. So, I went over there, and she said, look at that, that's my picture, and you know what, it's not my mugshot. She said, this is the first time I've ever been in the paper for doing something good. And then, in my class, our class of goal-setting, many of these women have taken other classes, and they've brought all of their certificates that they've gotten from the classes, they say, look what I've completed. I've never completed anything in my life before, and look at this, I can do this. And we give them homework in our class. I mean, you know, when you're in the jail, you've got a, literally, a captive audience, you need to make this time productive. So, we give them this homework, and there's something for them to do every day. Well, not only are most of them doing their homework, but then they share collaboratively about what they've done and how they answer the questions, so when they get to the class, they're head of us. Uh, now, Mr. Warfield, Commissioner Warfield, you wish all of your students were like that, don't you?
I would.
Oh, I'm sure you do. I'm sure you do. But what I'm saying is, this program is providing hope. Hope that when they get out, they have tasted some success in the jail, they've got a plan, they've got people on the outside that they can go to when they get bogged down, or to help them. And I have to share with you one of the greatest joys of my work in the jail, is when I am at Walmart, or I'm in a restaurant, I'm walking down the street, one of the, a woman will come up to me, and she'll say, do you remember me? She doesn't have blue on, and she doesn't have orange shoes on, and I'm over forty. And I say, oh, it's so good to see you. I don't say, no, I don't remember you, because they've got makeup on, they're all dolled up, and they're happy. And they said, I want you to know, I have been clean for three years. I have my children back. I have a job that I am now the supervisor. This is what our community needs to be doing. It's investing in our people who are dysfunctional, either because they've never had a shot at life, or they've made poor choices. These are not bad people, most of them. They're people who've made bad choices, who've never had the support that they're now getting. And I think that we all should thank our sheriff, Chief Johnson, and Director Young for the program that they have organized and brought a bunch of different people pulling together behind the team of horses, I'm not gonna call them mules or anything else, the team of horses, so that we're all pulling in the same direction and helping the least of these, our brethren.
I know it's been long, but I want to say three things about this program. Commissioner Hitchcock, I go back a long way with my alternatives, and I won't dwell on the negative, I want to dwell on three positive things. First of all, this program is succeeding because of those people in jail who are willing to confront their demons. If they are not willing to do that, then all the volunteers and all of the programs will fall on deaf ears. So, they are the real backbone of the program, the people in that jail, who for whatever reason, some of them are kindness, some of them are genuine, sincere, some of them fail. And that brings on the second point I'd like to make about that program, and I believe, from my observation, I've been to, I think, every graduation but one, and they allow us to talk, and of course, y'all know I'm unaccustomed to public speaking. But the philosophy there is not to be successful, even though it is successful, it is to be faithful. And that is faithful to the ideas and the precept that we want to help these people confront their demons, change their lifestyles, and make them productive members of the community. And lastly, without any hesitation in my heart and my mind, the reason this program is working, the reason it is successful, and the reason all these people are giving their time and the effort to this program, different from the earlier stages, is this woman right here. She has a servant's heart, she wants to serve these people, she wants to serve the community, and she wants to open up that servant's heart to each and every person that comes through there. So, I cannot say any more than that.
Chief, Chief Johnson, I think you need to find a few more people that are more passionate about this.
I've been, I've been having Mary Ann in the office for the last month trying to motivate. She's hard, she's hard to keep motivated. I also want to, I also want to speak tonight about pre-trial release. Heidi Miller couldn't be here, but I think it's important to see the overall aspect of what we're doing with all these things combined and the monies that, that we're really saving the taxpayers of Anderson County. It does cost money to have these programs, but pre-trial release is one that, that's dear to my heart because of what they save us. With, with the judges' cooperations and have these, having these individuals released, some of them can't afford to make bond through a bonding company, they don't have property, they can't make a property bond. But just for an example, in two thousand fifteen, there was four hundred and twenty-three people released on pre-trial release. If I conservatively estimate the average daily cost at fifty dollars, that's three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And that's just at fifteen days. I'm just, I'm just saying that for fifteen days. So, if we think about as, as taxpayers, if we can keep two hundred people out of the jail every day, and that's about what's been through our programs at the jail, okay? Two hundred people a day at fifty dollars a day, that's over three million dollars. So, you can see where this cost, or the savings really adds up. And another thing, and Mary Ann mentioned this earlier, I want you to remember the, the report that Commissioner Hitchcock did when we first started this program, that we're giving you statistical information after two and a half years. We need five, okay? We need five years to really have some really good, hard numbers, and, and I promise you, Mary Ann, we, we didn't fluff these numbers, and we've good, we've good accounting people that, that, that we didn't. But I wanted it to be conservative, I want you to see that just the bare bones, what we're doing, is changing lives in Anderson County. And, and I thank God for this program, I really do. I see the changes in the individuals, I see the changes in our officers, I see the, hopefully, we'll see the, we'll reap the rewards in our community down the road by not having as big a jail or not having to add on to. But I appreciate all these volunteers that come into our facility, without them, we couldn't do it, and especially what Judge Layton said, without her, and I'm gonna try to keep motivating her, and hope, hope she'll, she'll be able to do a better job in the future. But I do appreciate the, the commission funding this. I, I think it's important, I, I think the longer we keep this up, the better, better reports you're gonna get from me, and I appreciate your time tonight. Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that presentation, but there's something I want to say to the committee members of the Alternatives in Cooperation, to put all this together, job well done. Because it took the first committee to be able to come up with all these people, and I'm very overwhelmed. Thank you very much.
This concludes the public session of the meeting. We'll have a five-minute recess, then we'll go into the regular meeting. Thank you.
Good job, man. Good job. Thank you.[1217.15]
Commissioners, please go to the board and register your attendance, please. Okay. Okay. Parents of citizens, this is the time for any citizen to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. We've got three minutes to speak. Do I have anyone? Do you state your name, please?
And we'd like to bring forth some issues that have been mentioned in here, maybe a couple that haven't. Came, first of all, to talk about getting our road paved, but there's something far more important than that. I'm talking about Braden Flat, Duncan Flat, and I'm sure Val Mountain's included in that. But I get to think about our children that ride the bus down and back from school each day. And I understand there's been people that have been on a tour up there, people of importance towards this issue. We'd like to have guard rails put up, and I know it's been discussed, and we don't know where everybody's at on that completely yet, but I understand if we can get a camera mounted on the bus and have video for that, that would help in the speed this process up some. Just about each of those kids up there, I can name by name, and I know all their parents. They're all working-class citizens and taxpayers. And I say we're just more concerned about the safety of our children in that area and across into the mountain, in New River. And we do have a very good school bus driver that navigates that road and has kept them safe, but anything can happen. And I lost a dear friend towards the bottom of the mountain, and I think that's what got this started. John Roberts, he left behind, if I'm not mistaken, five kids. I guess my question is, who's next, or what's it going to take next for this to be done? You know, we would still like to have a road paved, I know there's issues with the gas company that put the gas wells in. I don't see that we're going to see anything out of them from what it's looking like. So can we not just get the road paved? Commissioners can deal with them, or other powers that be can deal with them after we get our citizens took care of. And we have decent road up there. It's kind of out of sight, out of mind, but maybe some people could take a ride up there and check this stuff out. We also need some brush cutting down on the sides of the road all the way from Lake City, probably across the mountain on 116. There's places, and I have some pictures I could show you, that you can't see the white line. So that even inhibits the bus drivers' trip each day even more. Some places, the log trucks or even maybe the bus have cut them back, and there's a wall of weeds that are growing in several places. But first and foremost, the safety of our children is what we're here for, and it's what our interest is in. I've had other people ask me questions about cell towers, you know, all kinds of different stuff. But I know we don't have time to get into all that. There's a thing going on about the broadband expansion. My wife's been very involved in that. She's been in touch with the governor's office and knows a lot of those ladies that answer the phones over by name. And she's had a petition started to try to help that process and speak for our county and our community on that. So Dennis may have something he wants to say. But, you know, like I said, I felt selfish thinking at first that, oh, we want our road paved, we want our road paved. Well, we do, but the safety of those children, I can name them Sammy, Hannah-Faye, John-Pile, Carly, Noah. There's a lot more people up there that people live down here don't see and don't realize live up there. And I feel they're just as important an Anderson County citizen as anybody else.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Scott. As all the commissioners know, we've been working on this project for several years, and we got funding a few years ago to do that. But they didn't get the guard rail put in where it really needed to be, in the most strategic location, based on its cost prohibitive. And I'm going to read this, what John Reagan sent me today. He addressed it to me. "Thanks for contacting me on the issue of State Road 116. As you know, this has been an ongoing concern for the state of Tennessee. In fact, I will recall to your memory to visit as scheduled with T-DOT Commissioner Shore to inspect that particular road with a team of highway engineers and T-DOT supervisors. And at that point in time, Chairman Fritz went along as well, along with Mr. Bates. During that tour, we stopped at the site of every DOT community mishap for the previous 10 years along that road to the Anderson County-Morgan County line. At each stop, the entire engineering team dismounted, examined the location, and made measurements. Please recall that very soon after that, T-DOT made improvements to that road that included restoring, pavement repairs, and signage changes. And that wouldn't have happened if it hadn't been for the Sheriff's Department, because they had the accurate records, more so than the Highway Patrol. Because when the Highway Patrol gave their numbers, we said these people are already buried before you ever get out." So the Anderson County Sheriff's Department Chief Locas was very instrumental in helping this. And then unfortunately, some needed upgrades were deferred at that time due to expense and engineering difficulty. For example, in a number of locations where requested T-DOT install guard rails, engineers indicated that insufficient road shoulder width and steep grade prohibited these improvements. In several areas, banks would have to be cut and actual roadbed moved. Consequently, to significantly improve the situation for school buses or similar-sized vehicles that travel State Road 116, major new project construction is the only alternative. As we discussed in our phone call, I have contacted T-DOT for an update. T-DOT re-prioritizes its road construction schedule every year on the basis of safety, congestion, and similar considerations. Obviously, roads with a high volume of automobiles and requirements for major engineering improvements rise near the top of such priority lists. As you know, the General Assembly only recently approved an increase in the road use fees to fund such new projects. Regrettably, it will take some time to accumulate enough to adequately reduce the $10.1 billion backlog of road projects. Sadly, from T-DOT perspectives, while the safety issues with Tennessee State Road 116 elevated on the list, a relative low volume of traffic puts it well below competing priorities. Therefore, I cannot tell you with clarity exactly when Tennessee State Road 116 will get to funding at this time. Back about a year and a half ago, when we first started this petition drive, I got with Joe Fordy, which is over Transportation, and asked him if we could do a GoCam video to put on that school bus, because as you're going down through there with a GoCam on the school bus, and it shows three inches, and the wheel of the bus is off, and this is just if he's in his line, and then it's a hundred-foot drop-off. I think that will speak volumes to the people that says, you know, this is low priority. If it's one child, that school bus carries 72 kids last year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
And it just takes one accident for a school bus to get people's attention with 72 kids on there. And they're going to wish that they would have fixed the road, and put the guard rails up, which would be a lot simpler.
And we do have students that, you know, even drive too. We have a son that drives it every day. You know, and you might say, well, you... Some people have said to me, you know, you choose to live up there. Yeah, I do, and it's a wonderful place to live, a lot of freedom to it. We also have, there's a lot of money being made off that road. The people that come from Ohio, that come from, take their way through Lake City up 116. They stop in Lake City, get gas, that's money to the county. You've got tons of motorcycle riders come up on a Saturday or Sunday and pick a curve. I've seen them pull people up off those curves after they went off of them on motorcycles. I mean, they're not Anderson County citizens, but they're paying to come and enjoy our area.
Commissioner Chris.
I want to thank you for coming before us and bringing these issues to us. And I heard you say your wife was interested in the broadband and cellular coming to the area. We have recently formed a broadband committee, and I would encourage you to get a hold of the mayor's office and contact them and attend the meetings, and you can be of great benefit to that committee.
Yes, Amanda Martin from Bill Haslam's office has gave her my name and number, so, yes.
Thank you for coming forward.
Commissioner Hissick.
Thank you.
Yes, I've said it before, I think that certainly guard rails should be one of, if not the highest priority in the county as we look to capital projects. It's very hard to understand why an area of the country that can build really nice high walls and benches for strip mines cannot use the same technology to put a road in on that mountain. And when I take people from Oak Ridge, my district, I take them through there. I say, now, is it very hard to understand why Anderson County schools close when there's just a little frost on the road? Imagine driving a bus down, and they're flabbergasted. They don't know 116 exists. But yet, we have the Lieutenant Governor of the state of Tennessee in Nashville, and we ought to be able to get the word to the delegations there.
Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also want to thank our constituents from the 4th District for coming down here and addressing this issue tonight. I wish that you didn't have to come down here and address this issue tonight. I've addressed it before. Commissioner Isbell's addressed it before. Our predecessors have addressed it before. And I apologize that it hasn't been fixed. I myself have been on the receiving end of coming around one of those curves in a vehicle being right in the middle of the double-yellow line and having nowhere to go. And only by God's grace was I able not to be on a particular spot in the road when that truck was. Certainly wasn't my driving ability. But I promise you, we won't stop. We will keep on, and we'll keep on trying until that road is as safe as it can possibly be to travel. Thank you all very much.
Can I say one thing, though?
Yes, sir.
You know, we have many people in those communities, Duncan Flat, Braden Flat, over into Rosedale. They don't want to come down here. We invited them to come with us. And I was hesitant about coming, because they say they're not going to do nothing. I'm not going. Why should I go? I think that's something that needs a different answer. Give them a reason to give a different answer. That we're not coming down here, so to speak, wasting their time.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Appreciate you. Anyone else? No one else? Okay. I'm going to recognize yours, your kids here, or young men and women, Dr. Parrott. Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, approval, correction of agendas, consent agenda, motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Regular agenda.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Move to, we would please move Dr. Parrott's report up to item number six in order to get these kids out. Get them back home.
Have a motion and a second. Are you sure they're going to study?
They sure do.
Okay. Is that true, young men, women? Okay. Any other changes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, guys. I would just like to take this time before we do the next item on the agenda. It states elections, chairman, vice-chairman, parliamentarian. I just want to take this time to thank each and every one of my fellow commissioners for allowing me to support you as chairman for these last two terms. I'm not going to put my name in the hat this year. I feel that it's the duty of some other individual on this bench to follow in this seat. And I just want to say thank you for all of supporting me. I want to thank you for all that you've done for this county and your district. So in saying all that, I'd like to... Do we have a nomination for Chair of Anderson County?
Chair of Anderson County make a motion to nominate Commissioner Isbell.
Motion to nominate Commissioner Isbell. We have a motion and a second. Any other nominations?
Move the nomination seats to be let back on the...
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No way. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's great on me.
Good man.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you.
Next, we have the election of Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we select Commissioner Warfield for the vice position.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any others?
Make a motion, nomination seats to be elected back on the...
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No way. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's great on me.
Good man.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, Steve. Good job.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No way. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's great on me.
Good man.
Thank you, Steve.
Yes, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the election of Parliamentarian. I select Robert McCamey as Parliamentarian, if he will accept.
Yes, sir.
You move to this side. You move to this side, Rob.
Okay.
Next, we have the nominating committee report by Chairman Alderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To save time, you've had the minutes from the meeting. I hope everyone's looked at. If you would like to handle it as submitting the commission on committees as a full agenda, I so move unless there's objection by the commission.
We have a motion. We have a second.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have the election of vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we select Commissioner Warfield for the vice position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any others?
Make a motion, nomination seats will be elected by a commission.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Okay, now I'll go down here.
Next, the selection of parliamentarian. I select Robert McCamey as parliamentarian if he will accept.
Yes, sir.
Can you move to this side? Can you move to this side, Rob? Next, we have the nominating committee report by Chairman Alderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To save time, you've had the minutes from the meeting. I hope everyone's looked at. If you would like to handle it as submitting the commission on committees as a full agenda, I so move unless there's objection by the commission.
We have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next is add a cultural extension committee, reappointment, appointment of members.
Move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. The next we'll have is Dr. Parrott.
Always a pleasure to stand in front of commission. You all have a very important job in this county and I do thank you, I thank Mr. Ember and Mr. Isbell for the way you have been leading our county. Tonight, I've got a, as you know, I can always talk about the Anderson County school system, but tonight is kind of special. I've got some people I want you to introduce because it's, our motto, you know, is every student, every day. And tonight, we've got some students here that have done an extraordinary thing. Since 19 and 28, there has never been a single chapter in history of the United States that has five state winning teams in a single year. Well, tonight, we have that from Anderson County schools. So, so that in itself is a, is a treat. The other thing is, we still have in Anderson County, we have six winning teams because we have another winning team from Clinton High School, which is a horse judging team. But tonight, and I'm going to get some of these names wrong, but I, I want these people to stand up. You'll hold your applause till we get done because this is, this is, this is why you spend $50 million a year to make sure that they have a great education. And it's, it's not about me, it's about them. So if you will, if you will stand up. First is, we have food, science, and technology. Let me say one thing before I do it. They go to the region, then they go to the state. So they've won two of these to start with. Some of them may just be state only. But when you do this, I have been to these at the national. It is not an easy thing to do, to win a state, because every high school just about in the state of Tennessee has an act program. So this is, so food, science, and technology, we have Emily Sparks, 12th grader from Rocky Top. We have Anna Nice, we have Anna Leach, Leach, from Rocky Top. I knew I'd get that wrong. Gabby Hudson from Andersonville, 12th grade. And we have Emma Johnson, 10th grader from Andersonville. Then our poultry, science, and evaluation, we have Skylar Mazzingo, 11th grade from Rocky Top. We have Jacob Kaiser, 12th grader from Rocky Top. We have Ethan McAnally from Andersonville, he's 11th grade. We have Wesley Zemsky, 11th grader from high school. Then our environmental and natural resources, we have Ethan Lawson, 11th grader from Andersonville. Sidney Zemsky from high school, 12th grader. We have Bobby Hunley, 10th grader from Andersonville. We have Jessica Kaiser, 10th grader from Rocky Top. It's called Agron. Agron, Agronmy. It's a new one on me. I would call it Ergonomi because I thought it was about economics, but it's about soil and seed and equipment. We have John Smitty from Rocky Top, 11th grader. We have Traythen Beatty, 10th grader from Rocky Top. We have Nicholas Monday from high school, 10th grader. And we have Dylan Hackmaker, 11th grader from Rocky Top. Then we have milk quality and products. We have Gracie Murphy from Andersonville. We have Tamara Hee from high school, 9th grader. We have Kennedy Licon, is that right? What is it? What is it?
Lakota.
Lakota, from Andersonville. And then we have Julie Brimmer from Andersonville, 11th grader. Let's give all these a great big round of applause. Now, all of these students will be going to the national contest. That's in Indianapolis, November, October, the 24th through the 27th, and they will compete against 50 other states. And I think we'll have some winners. But you think about that, one of the things that amazed me because I, when I was CTE director, I come in one day and they were doing the milk judging. And, and they have to decide what's good milk and what's not. And, and sometimes I think it would be good if, if when we got a bid for our county's milk is we let them judge it. Might, might have a lot less problems. But, but anyway, they've done a fantastic job and, and it will probably cost about $20,000 to send these people to that. But I can tell you that, that's a whole lot cheaper than rehab, okay? So these people have done an excellent job. They do, they work hard. There's some other things, you know, we have a lot of students, I know, environmental fund that they do at our high schools, they do the, they do the mock trial and everything. But, but I want you to know is that every week I go by that school on a Saturday or when there's day off, for instance, we got out of school on Friday, there was no power, right? How many of you were at school that day, on the Friday that there was no power about two weeks ago? Did you, any of you's worked? So you didn't have any of them there that day?
I changed, I changed my mind.
He changed his mind, okay. Cozy Collins said, can they come in? I said, yes. But they worked tirelessly on this and this is outside of their academic, of their class. So again, thank you for allowing me to do that tonight. Just a few other things that is also great is we, our school system, on Thursday, we had a hurricane relief. Our, our schools got together and worked for the hurricane victims in Texas. And on Thursday, Mr. Myers, he took a whole truckload of school supplies down to Williamson County to be loaded on a tractor trailer to go to Houston. So our students really and truly, it was all he could get in a pickup truck of school supplies. So our students really and truly stepped up when somebody's indeed. They told us that at, over in Tennessee, that they had put together almost 10,000 backpacks full of school supplies that were going. They were looking for another tractor trailer on Friday night to take because they had so much. So Tennessee is really and truly, when you tell it, a volunteer state it is, and our students stepped up to the plate. The other thing after tonight, after you approved the budget amendments tonight, I am happy to say, we will be one to one completely at the middle school and the high school. We just like 12th grade. And from tonight, when that other 100,000 goes in there, we will be completely one to one at both of our schools. And that is just, when I think about how it happened, I cannot tell you, but I can tell you, when you go through the schools, the students are carrying their, their computers and they're doing a good job with them. So we're excited about that. The other thing is, our attendance right now is, for some reason, we are up in our high schools, we're almost 100 students up in high schools this year, but we're about 90 students in elementary low. But overall, we're up about 40 students from when we quit last year. We're a little higher than we was last year, so we're excited about that. The other thing is, in the report, just to show you, we are, we'll be sending out on the first of October to every school. Every school gets $10,000 for their needs of their school. And that wouldn't happen without our budget being in good shape and the, the budget in Anderson County, you allowing us to do that. We're sending out almost $600,000 to the schools and that goes directly to the students. That's for classroom supplies, that's for teacher supplies, and it, it allows those teachers not to use all that money out of their pocket. The, the, the other one and the last thing I will say is that because we had a good budget this year, we're going to be allowed to do a few things that we really couldn't do. We're going to be working on some roofs. For instance, we're finishing up the one to one. But, but there's something that, that looms down the road and we talked about it in the financial committee, meeting today, is you know, what happens is, we don't really have a, a great capital outlay plan. So what we do is, we wait five or 10 years till everything gets so bad, we have to do stuff, and then we end up borrowing money and then we don't do anything for 10 more years. So we're really, I'm, I'm working with the financial committee and I really, I think we've got to figure out a plan to where, you know, as my dad says, you can't borrow yourself out of debt. And what happens is, we borrow so much money is that when something comes up we need to do, we're, we're hand tied. And, and right now, we've got about $5 million worth of capital outlays on the books that we could do tomorrow. That is, that's not building any new buildings, that is not building any new classrooms. One of them is just redoing the air conditioning at Anderson County High School and that's about a million and a half dollars. And, and so those are the things we just, you know, what happens is, if we don't keep up with it in, in, in four or five years, we'll be coming and we'll borrow money and, and again, we can't borrow ourselves out of debt. So I, I don't know the answer. I, I know that, you know, we have to be frugal with our money, but I just wanted to kind of let you know where I was at. And I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Wondell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Parrott, thanks for the report. I would suggest perhaps the increase in high school numbers could be because of the result of Anderson County School Department and the school board and your administration getting the focus, continued focus effort on academics. I think we're starting to see the fruits of folks coming to this county because of academics. So I thank you, I thank the school board and all the teachers and all the systems and I appreciate what you're doing.
I, I got an email the other day and, and from a lady that had had her, had her son and daughter in a private school in Knoxville. And, and her comment was, I have wasted my money for these few years and I, now I'm back in Anderson County and it's, it's better than what I had. So, you know, on, on camera, i- if you're spending money for a private school, you might as well just come back to Anderson County and see how good it is.
Mr. Chairman, just to elaborate for those who might be home listening, the one to one program is where all of our students have laptops, which the school system brought to us, Anna Whitley and Joanna Whitley and all those, so I want to thank you. And then, last thing, doctor, is the flu shots still in progress?
Flu shots are in place. We will be, Anna Hurt is working on that. We're working with our local pharmacies and they'll be doing those at the schools. So that will be, that will be of no charge again this year for all of our staff and students.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? I've got one.
Yes.
In Washington Channel 95, and it was the Clinton City Council, and they were actually talking about the revenues, the retail revenues are up significantly. And I think that's a big part of what this committee has always preached, stay at home. And to fellow Commissioner Rick Meredith, that's over the chamber, I mean, they have a big initiative for shop local. And, and it's took years, but we can actually see that now.
I, I was really surprised at our chamber meeting last month that we had over 100 new building permits in Anderson County last year, and, and that's great. You know, I, you notice them now when you go through because every one of those means we've got a new family to come into our schools. Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Wondell.
Sorry to speak again. I just would like to say, maybe Commissioner Meredith might want to add in an agricultural program to the chamber with all these folks that we have out here because it's impressive. It's in our county seal agriculture, so that would be great. And he's got something to say, so I defer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Commissioner Wondell asking a question. I figured I'd answer the chair. Commissioner Wondell, that's correct. I think we'll start an agricultural program with Commissioner Warfield as chairman. And we'll add all these kids to the committee.
Any other questions or statements?
We're going to let these kids go home, if that's all.
Thank you. Good job, great job.
Commissioner Meredith, Commissioner Meredith, did he bring all the starbursts just for
you? Because usually he disperses those all the way around.
Mr. Chairman, when you get over on this side of the island, Commissioner White makes sure you're well taken care of. We can stay awake for long meetings, so we have plenty of sugar over here.
We did. We did. That, that was my next thing. I realized I messed up already. The next thing we're going to take up is Industrial Development Board reappointment, appointment of members of board.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, under department heads presentation by Russell Beard, Director of Human Resources. And happy belated birthday.
Thank you. Good evening. Russell decided that I would get to stand before you all tonight as wellness coordinator to talk to you a little bit about something. When this body approved the creation of the Thrive Health and Wellness Center, we informed you all that it would take about three years to get to the point where the savings produced from the clinic would outweigh the expenses. Tonight, I stand before you 17 months later to report that that three-year goal was realized the end of July.
Wow.
March 2017, we celebrated one year anniversary of the Thrive opening. Since then, the clinic has continued to be a huge benefit for the employees and their families. The clinic has saved the employees over $30,000 since April of this year.
Wow.
So that is quite impressive, in my opinion. I want to sincerely say thank you to each of you for your support that you've shown for the Thrive Health and Wellness Center and the Anderson County Government Employees' Health and Wellness. It means a great deal. At this time, I'd like to introduce Jane Pettis. She is the Director of Clinical Operations for Anderson County Government. Jane's come all this way this evening to present Anderson County with an award of excellence.
Anderson County Government's new employee health center has surpassed all expectations. In an effort to improve the health and wellness of the employees and the families of Anderson County Government, our mutual goal was to save taxpayers of Anderson County money on the county's healthcare cost. CareHere and Anderson County partnered to open the county's first onsite healthcare center in March of 2016. The Anderson County Health and Wellness Center provides primary care and pre-employment services with a focus on wellness and health improvement under the medical guidance of Whitney Gillum and under the nursing service of Jamie Chambers. The health center has seen over 500, 5,000 appointments and has identified over 400 previously undiagnosed med, health conditions. The Health and Wellness Center has saved the Anderson County taxpayers over $175,000 in the first year alone. The success of the health center is partly due to the excellent service of the medical team and the support of Anderson County Government in recognition of their extraordinary service to the employees and families of Anderson County and the wonderful support of the Anderson County Government. We would like to present this plaque for high achievement and thank Anderson County Government for your support and partnering, partnering with CareHere. Ladies, thank you for your hard work and dedication, it's greatly appreciated and we look forward to more future success.
I'm not used to standing ovation. I feel like I'm on The Apprentice with Donald Trump, so I don't really have a whole lot to say. I know all of you all very well, most of you, and your families. And I think I can speak for Jamie when I say that we are blessed and very grateful to be here. It's like a family to us now and, you know, this is one of the first jobs that I've had that I don't, not look forward to going to work every day. So we appreciate it. We love Anderson County, we love the patients and their families and hope that we can continue this on a long-term basis. So thank you guys very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beard, you know that when you brought this to us, I was, I'm willing to say, I was very skeptical about the whole program. How are you going to save the county money by putting it in the courthouse and encouraging the employees to come to the courthouse rather than go see their own doctors? Well done, is all I can tell you. Thank you very much. I'm all about saving money, but you've done very well, obviously. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Don't exit yet.
Don't what?
Don't exit yet. Anybody else? Statements or anything? Because I want to talk about my personal relationship. I mean, they've actually seen my daughter at 7:30 before school, so she didn't have to miss any school. I've called them, they've got me in within just, you know, a couple of hours. And to make you feel like they've known you forever, I mean, they have got the perfect bedside manner. But, but I, I encourage everybody to use them. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we got county mayor. Oh, yeah. Yeah, we did that.
I only have the one items on the agenda there and then on the written report, just a submission from Speaker Harwell as well as
a submission from Speaker Harwell as well as the report on solid waste. And then I also did bring the forensic report, and I'll make one available for the Commission Office, so if anyone wants, you can go online and look at that. But also, here's a hard copy for Commission.
Any questions to the mayor before we take up the appointments? Next, we have Conservation Board appointments. We have Mr. Ricky Rose, Mr. Chuck Fritz, and Mr. Christine Dixon. Last time, we took them up independently. Do we have a motion to do that or take them all together at the same?
I move independently.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I'd like to make a comment. I think we have a better chance of getting some people on.
Okay. Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we understand the reasoning from the mayor on the presentation of appointments. I guess my question is, do we have a definitive answer if the appointments that are in place, obviously business is still going on? I mean, I guess I'm torn. I mean, last time I voted for the folks to try to support the mayor's efforts, I guess, but I would like to hear from Jay. I mean, what I don't think is understood in the community is we have members still on the Conservation Board. For instance, Commissioner Warfield, are you still the chairman? And I guess I'd like some clarification. I mean, I hate for us to keep voting every month and, you know, it seems for me to cause dissension between us, and I don't want dissension. I want to get to a resolution and let's move forward and don't want to play, put blame at anyone. So, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to hear from the Law Director.
Commissioner Wondell, what's the, the way I understand it, Mayor, do you have two expired terms right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we need to fill those two expired terms. Now, the other one that's in contention is that of Commissioner Warfield, who is the chairman. If I'm correct, he has not expired his term, correct? And when would that expire?
December 2019.
Okay, and you're seeking to replace him at this time?
Yes, he was not appointed, it was a mayoral appointment and I was not given that opportunity to make that appointment.
Right, with the County Commission confirmation.
Correct.
I understand, we've been through that. This is the way the law shakes out on this issue. We have a, what's called a de jure committee, which is authorized by law, that being the Conservation Board, and what is in essence a de facto appointment. The appointment of Commissioner Warfield as a member of that Conservation Board was confirmed by County Commission, so there is some legality in it. The deficiency is, this was before the mayor started bringing the appointments, which is commensurate with the law, to County Commission. This was done through the Nominating Committee for years. So, the way the law is, and the cases go back to, I think, 1873, there is no collateral attack on a de facto appointment of a committee member. He continues to serve until that term expires. So what we need to do tonight is keep Commissioner Warfield in place till his term expires and put two more people on there so we have a full Conservation Board at this time. Any questions on that issue?
Mr. Crease?
Well, I looked at our list that was on our agenda of all the Commission Boards and Committees, and I saw one vacancy, Mrs. Lively. It's the person that, her term who expired last December. The rest of those terms are good until, I think there was one that was to expire December of this year, but the others were later on. I didn't know there was two vacancies, I only saw one.
That's, that's good, Jerry. Thank you so much. That's a clarification of the facts. I was under the impression from tonight, listening to the mayor, that we had two vacancies from expired terms. So, Ms. Lively, is that Brenda McCamey? That's, that's...
Karen.
Oh, Karen. And is she looking for a reappointment?
Actually, several months ago, and I have to go back through the minutes here, we removed her from the board because she's been asked...
Okay, I remember that.
There was, I wrote a nice letter...
I remember. So, how many seats are we looking to fill tonight that are expired terms?
I'm looking at Conservation Board right now, you know, the one that's open right now is Karen Lively, 1216. Next one is Earl Cagle, 1217. It's the next closest one.
Mr. Brown's term has expired and then they declared a vacancy of Ms. Lively with a vote and a letter.
So, Mr. Brown is expired too?
Well, no. I called Brooke earlier.
Yes.
I thought back in like October, we had done two things. One, we had appointed, or we elected Terry Brown as Vice Chair, which by the new bylaws and that's what we needed to do, but also she remembered also that we had voted to put him on as another term. And I'm not going back through the Nominating Committee report.
That needs to come through the mayor to County Commission.
I understand, I'm just saying at that point in time.
Right.
So, as it stands, the way that it looks, there's two, there's two vacancies.
Two, okay. So, mayor is correct. We need to fill two spots tonight, and as it stands right now, Commissioner Warfield can continue with his term until it expires.
I have some reservations on two of these. I consider Ricky Rose to be a friend of mine, but as it stands right now...
May I call for a point of order? Jay?
Yes, ma'am.
Are the rules on confirmation, I don't want to put the nominees in this particular position. My understanding of the law is that Commission has to do an up or down vote and they cannot discuss the particular candidates.
They cannot question them at this point. They cannot question the individual people. They can certainly deliberate.
Okay.
Is that what I'm speaking to? Do we have any individuals here tonight? I've got Earl, but he's got a secure seat, correct? Thank you, Earl, for your service. Remarkable man. Go ahead.
As it stands in Anderson County now, which is part of public record, Ricky Rose's son-in-law, his daughter, and his two grandkids are currently in a lawsuit against Anderson County and the Conservation Board. I feel, and again, I consider Ricky a close friend of mine, that I think it's a conflict of interest when your immediate family has a lawsuit against the county and the Conservation Board. The other, I'm sorry, Christine used to be the Park Manager and according to Chairman Isabel, we've hired her back twice, if, if, thank you, sir. If that's, if that is correct, and kind of makes me wonder about what her dedication is to Anderson County, if she's going to be going and coming that way. And I look back at, when I got on, and I think my first meeting was March of 2015, a lot of drama, a lot of turmoil in Anderson County Park. Now, we do, we do not have that.
Let's go ahead and get a motion on the floor. Go ahead and deliberate. Thank you.
We've got a motion to take them one at a time.
Okay.
And we started the discussion, we got off track. So, the motion is to take individuals, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, let's go ahead and continue with the appointments, and we'll start first with Mr. Ricky Rose. We'll go to the board and vote. In favor of Mr. Ricky Rose, it'd be a yes vote. Next is Mr. Chuck Fritz. Go to the board and vote. Yes is to confirm.
I'd like to ask a question about that. Is Mr. Fritz's appointment to replace Mr. Warfield?
In other words, we'll have two commissioners, two commissioners on the board?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And we have that, like, on the beard board and several others.
Who will he be replacing?
I don't know, I don't have that on here, but Commissioner Warfield just said his term expires 12/2019, so that must be the Christine Dixon appointment.
The which?
Christine Dixon appointment, because they're each, they each go one every year.
That clarifies.
Yes, there's one that expires the end of this year and then 18, 19, 20, and 21.
And we're ready to vote?
Ready to vote. Correct, we got nine? Motion passes.
And the last one being LeBron based on the...
Okay.
So, we only filled one, is that correct?
Correct.
I thought you had two.
Well, I had Christine on, but I had that for his particular position, so...
You still had one.
You voted down Ricky Rose, and I was appointing him for the 12, for the 2021 to fill Karen Lively's.
Okay, I understand you still have two, you had two vacancies, you've only filled one tonight.
Correct, but...
You can still try to fill that other one.
I will consider if I...
You want to keep them, you want to keep them in that order?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'll come back next month with another appointment.
Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, this is an on agenda, but I've had several calls from the new part of the district in District One, what used to be District Three. Apparently, I'm just looking for some guidance. The Anderson County Water Authority has two pumping stations out there, and I'm getting a lot of feedback that there's some smells at certain times, and I was wondering if you could advise me and maybe the constituents on how we could approach that.
Sure, and I've actually been, I've also received calls and I've actually been out there on site and have gone at different times during the day and when it's hot and when it's not, and sometimes I have smelled something, sometimes I have not. And I have spoken with both members of the board and Mr. Clowers, and they are working on, I think they were trying, I don't know the technology and the science of pumping stations, but apparently they've been working on adjusting the chemicals, and then I think their next effort was to move to some type of vapor or vaporization, something that they can install and maybe someone on the committee knows what that part is, but there's something else they're going to try to do to address that matter.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
Appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else for the mayor?
And before I step away, I would like to give some praise to our EMS Department and our Health Department for also, like, the schools participating in assistance during the Florida hurricanes, and both of these individuals are hooked in with the state, and so they were part of a state mission to send folks to the area for assistance. So, everyone's back safely, and then I know some questions were raised about how that is financed, and actually, the state does reimburse the county for those efforts, although I think it would be very worthwhile even if we did have to pay for that, but I did want to give those folks some praise. Justin Harmon and Michael Reinhardt and Gail Byrd.
Thank you. Next, we have Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always my honor to be with you and congratulations, Commissioner Isabel, Commissioner Warfield, Commissioner McCamey, on your new positions. I'm sure you'll do excellent in these roles. We've got a special guest here tonight, and I'm going to yield my time to begin with to him, a guy that means so much to us, certainly me, and that's General Clark, and he's going to talk a little bit about opioid litigation. He's also going to answer any questions that you may have concerning crime in Anderson County. Thank you.
Thank you. It's always good to be with you, back at a familiar place with familiar faces. I was asked to address the opioid litigation. I had sent a memo out to each of you and the other local governments in Anderson County indicating that I was looking at this issue, which I have done for several months. A decision and announcement is pending, but we are not ready to make that yet, and so there are a number of questions I can't ask, I can't answer because we have some announcements and plans that are in the offing and we don't want to get the cart before the horse. However, living the opioid crisis on the front lines every day, I'm acutely aware of the problem it has represented for Anderson County, all of our cities, many of our families, both touched by addiction within the family and also those victimized by crime associated with the opioid epidemic. Because of that, I began this task of reviewing the options available and represented that I would report those to you. I'm not completely ready to do that tonight, as I indicated, but I will tell you that I've interviewed a number of law firms. I have met several times with the Attorney General. I can tell you that the Attorney General is and has been in the process of acting in this matter. It's my understanding that Tennessee is among a group of approximately 40 states researching and taking action with regard to the opioid manufacturers and distributors. In meeting with the Attorney General, I was evaluating frankly whether the remedy and strategy that he was employing and the other states were employing would be satisfactory to maximize the assistance to Anderson County and its citizens. I concluded that it was not. I've asked the Attorney General for reasonable assurances to adjust his strategy and he declined. Frankly, I was hoping that he would take this ball and act in a way that I thought would be appropriate for Anderson County, but I'm not satisfied that that's going to be the case. And so, I began a process of evaluating whether there might be a civil cause of action that would be appropriate, and began interviewing lawyers that were interested in that. There was apparently a conference in North Carolina where a speaker indicated to a group of lawyers that this might be a good cause of action, and I'm sure many of you are aware that there was sort of a firestorm of activity by lawyers approaching local governments, including here in Anderson County. I've interviewed those law firms, almost all of them in Tennessee, that were interested in pursuing this cause of action, and we have made a selection with regard to what we think is appropriate. In this regard, I will tell you that there are several legal strategies that can be pursued. One of them is uniquely possessed by the District Attorney General, called the Tennessee Drug Dealer Liability Act. And because of that statute, the District Attorney General is in a unique position to pursue not just that strategy, but the other strategies that other law firms have pursued. So, that puts an extra burden on the District Attorney, and I and the other 30 district attorneys that cover the state of Tennessee have pursued this collectively and individually, and I would expect an announcement coming shortly with regard to actions that will be taken on behalf of most of the counties in East Tennessee. Having said that, it's my understanding that Operations Committee looked at this issue and deferred action for 30 days. I would expect that I would be in a position to come back to the next Operations Committee meeting with more details. And so, I would ask for your patience and forbearance and understanding that we are trying to act collectively, collaboratively, and smartly, but we will share everything with you as soon as we can. I'll be happy to try and address any questions you may have on this or any others.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're back to my written report on Section A, contract approvals.
Okay, we're back to my written report on Section A contract approvals. Is there any questions on the contract approvals this month? Okay. Item B is an action item for you tonight. Unfortunately, the Montessori School of Oak Ridge has closed its doors. They were leasing space to us on a rather new lease, they're right in the middle of it, a two-year lease. It expires in December of 2018 for $669 per month. They have asked me to approach County Commission tonight to get a waiver on those payments and get a release, so they don't have to continue paying on those. The lease that we have is one of the standard leases. It doesn't allow them to cancel that lease. It would take County Commission approval to cancel that lease. They need about another six weeks, so that would put us about the first of November to move all their assets out of that building. But anyway, I'm here tonight asking you for direction on that, whether or not you want to relieve them of that liability, with that $669 for another 15 months, and we move on, or whether you want to hold them to that lease agreement. It's your call.
Make a motion to release them, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to say, Commissioner Jaeger?
Thank you. Are they going to relocate to another location, or are they done altogether?
They've closed their doors. They just don't have enough students. It's very unfortunate. They've been an excellent tenant for us for years, provided a needed service in the city of Oak Ridge, but it's just not cost-effective at this point with the number of students they have. In fact, I believe they told me they were down to six students. So thank you, I'm sure they'll appreciate that. Item C.
We need to vote on that.
Oh, yeah, we need, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item C is just an update on the General Sessions Division Two renovation. As I expressed to the Finance Committee today, I've got some concerns about the path this project is going down. There's been numerous change orders sent to my office in the past few weeks. I've shared those with County Commission via email. Some of these changes are going to require a significant amount of money. These are changes that are necessitated by a few things. The roof evidently was not inspected by the general contractor before they bid on it, or the architect, there's going to have to be some repairs to that roof. And if I, my recollection is correct, I'll have to lean on Commissioner Creasy and Commissioner Wondell, Commissioner Alderson, Commissioner Meredith, been around here for a long time. Seems like we put a roof on that building 10, 12 years ago. But anyway, the complete roof does not have to be replaced, but it does have some sections that it's going to need some work on. It has to be done, or it'll start leaking, and it'll be a problem continuously. We do not have estimates on that. Then I believe you saw an email from me last week where we found out that we've got a crawl space no one ever knew about. They were laying the plumbing for new bathrooms. They started using a concrete cutter and fell through the floor. We thought that building was on a slab, so the architect, but it's not. There is a small basement where the boiler is located, but it's roughly a 50 by 40 section. But where we're at, over on the General Sessions Division Two renovation side, which is on the far western portion, is built on a crawl space. That's going to need to be repaired. I sent you the estimate for that today. A few of the other estimates, or a few of the other issues were brought forward by County Circuit Court Clerk William Jones and the General Sessions Judge Miller. They wanted some changes. They wanted a service counter built in the clerk's office, service window, and a wall demolished there across the hall in the courtroom. The judge wants the bailiff's room, which is that small room in the courtroom, torn out. And they wanted a new room constructed in the secretary's office to house the bailiff. Those are all in addition. And yes, these plans were sent out to all these individuals, all the stakeholders. I'm sure if you go back and look, you'll see that. Everybody knew what we had. We put it out for bid. We defined the scope of that project. We accepted the low bid on it. And so now, when there's changes that has to be done, it's on us. What I propose to do, and I'll keep you abreast of each and every one of these changes, I'm going to take them all to the Budget Committee and then bring them back forward to you. I'm not going to approve any of them, I don't have that authority to do that. It takes additional money, and that will have to come out of the Undesignated Reserve. So be aware, there will be some changes coming forward. I do not want this project to turn out like the General Sessions Division Two when we did the Turnpike Project. Very similar, it started off as a low bid project, there were significant change orders. Then that project grew tremendously, if you recall that. But anyway, that's where we're at, and we'll approach each and every one of those changes individually, and you'll be allowed to vote on those. Also, understand that that may put us behind on the construction project. We signed a 120-day contract, that's what Commission wanted. So that'll be on us while we wait on these estimates, wait on budget approval and County Commission approval in October. Any questions on those issues?
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. Jay, you know, I'd like modifications made to my house, you know, like maybe, oh, a swimming pool put in the back side of my house. I can't afford it. It's not what I planned for, it's not what I budgeted for. I think it's wrong for anyone to step forward and say, I want the bathroom to be a little bit bigger, and I want you to move the counter from here to there because it's an inconvenience. Is there not a way we can put a stop to any modifications or unnecessary alterations at this point?
Yes, ma'am.
Apart from going and dragging out further and further going through the system?
Very good point. The mechanism is exactly the way I've outlined it. I'll take each and every one of these changes to the Budget Committee. There'll be a level of vetting at that committee level. The ones that pass forward will come to County Commission, and you'll vote on them. There'll be no changes unless you know about it, that it require expenditure of county money.
I guess I'm asking this because I don't want to see it drawn out any further. It's unfortunate that it's gotten to the point that it has. It's a necessary change for us to go from one location to another, but I don't want to see it pushed out another six months because someone wants.
I understand your concerns. We'll try our hardest to expedite this. We've got a contractor there that's dedicated to getting this done as quickly as possible, but it may not be a 120-day project. Just want you to be aware of that. I'll get you, some of those changes that I sent to you today did not have prices to accompany those changes. Those are coming, so you'll make an informed decision on whether or not you think that is a prudent call to allow these, but any other issues or questions on that?
Jay?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Being on the Budget Committee, I'm thinking about how I might want to deal with it.
Yes, sir.
If you can do this, this is what I, as an individual, would like to see come to the Budget Committee. It is sort of a two-by-two matrix. So it's which one of these would have had to be done under the original bid? Could not complete without doing this. Then within that, those you have costs and those you don't have cost yet. And on the other side is those that weren't necessary. I don't want to call them optional or categorize them in other ways, but not necessary to complete the original. And then within that, those without cost and with cost, and it'd be a two-by-two matrix. And maybe we would be able to vote on them by groups. Maybe not, but it gives us a starting place to split them if we have to. And I'd like to ask, Mr. Chairman, if I could get the Chair of the Budget Committee to come in. If he doesn't want it to come that way, I would not, I would not keep the request in.
Commissioner White?
Thank you. I think that would be a great way to present that to Budget. But I need to, I think we need to keep in mind that we need to be frugal with our fund balance. Above everything that Mr. Jaeger is talking about, we need to be frugal with this fund balance. So you bring it, and we'll talk about it.
Sounds good. Thank you, Commissioner White.
Commissioner Creasy?
Well, I think I'll be going on the Budget Committee, and I'll be joining you, Commissioner White, being frugal. The, both, both my fellow Commissioner and to my left, and my fellow Commissioner to the right have expressed some of the concerns I had when I pressed the button. And one of those was what is really necessary as a change order? And it sounded like the bathroom floor and the roof. Those other two changes, I think is something that we can get by and wait for a while until they get set in there, because I recall going to those pre-bid and pre-construction meetings with the judge and with Mr. Jones, and I have high respect for both.
Yes, sir.
But, and I want to honor their requests, but I think we can wait until a little later after we, because there may be more requests, and those requests may change. They may no longer be important once they get in there and start operating. So I thank Commissioner Hitchcock and for bringing that up, and Jerry for being, wanting to be frugal, because I remember the last time I was on the Budget Committee, I was frugal, and I think I made just about every elected official in the courthouse mad at me. And some of them may still hold that against me, I don't know, but I plan to be frugal with you, Jerry.
Mr. Warfield?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay, didn't we have a company that we paid for to go down and do the inspection on this building?
We had an architect.
An architect?
And they hired out people to take a look at it. And then we had a pre-bid meeting, we solicited competitive bids, and we took the low bid.
So this pops up a few months after they had done their inspection?
Yes.
The bathroom floor and the roof needed repair? I don't think we need to pay for that.
Well, there is an option, and we'll certainly bring that to the Budget Committee, that we go against their surety bond if they, there is some, perhaps they neglected to do some inspections that they promised us that they did. The other thing is, you understand, our financing was contingent upon. We asked for the exact amount of what that was going to be. So any additional change order has to come from the Undesignated Fund, as Commissioner White spoke of, and that's a problem. We want to keep that within budget. One thing that I am going to eliminate, and we do have approval on this from the Sheriff's Office, and it's about $6,000, is the razor wire on the fence. There's no need at all for razor wire down there. These inmates that come in there certainly are low security to begin with, but they're shackled and handcuffed, they're not going to be hopping an eight-foot fence anyway with guards surrounding them. So I think that was unnecessary expense and may even put a little bit of extra liability on us. So I'm going to go ahead and eliminate that razor wire option and save some money. That's very expensive stuff by the foot. Any other questions on this particular issue?
Commissioner Wondell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jay?
Yes, sir.
Do we have a project manager on this project, right?
It's just, nobody volunteered for it, so I'm doing it through my office.
Is there a clause in the contract that we could exit and stay where we're at?
No.
So in essence, they find another pit full of some hazardous substance, we still got to proceed on, and there's nothing we can do about it?
No, I wouldn't say that. If you wanted to regroup at this point, we could attempt to cancel the contract, but there's going to be liquidated damages, and they may hold us to the total amount. They would be most likely entitled to a large portion of that. And also consider, at this point, that building has been gutted. It is not usable in any form or fashion. If you get down there right now, it's, it's in a point where it couldn't be used for anything, I don't think.
Well, and I understand that, and I don't think anything's being used in it now. I don't suspect there'll be anything used in it in the next 120 days. And all I see is, Mr. Chairman, is us spending more money. And I know, I got complete faith and confidence in the Budget Committee, and I just, I just think our balance has gotten so low, and this is a guy that spent many years sitting here saying, spend it. You know, it's the taxpayers' money, spend it. And so when I'm sitting here scratching my head going, what's going on? I even concern myself. I would just ask, Mr. Chairman, that if it was possible, we could at least review the option to stay where we're at, hold our horses, and work out an arrangement. I mean, that facility's working, that facility's functioning, that facility is in place. Yes, sometimes you have to take a loss, and I understand it. So I'm going to make it a motion that the contract be reviewed for the possibility of options for District Two court renovation at Daniel Arthur. I so move.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Have a second for discussion? Any discussion?
I have a second.
We got a second. Any discussion?
I have utmost respect for Commissioner Wondell. But I think, I think at this point, that would be a poor business decision. And like I say, I've got utmost respect.
Same here.
But we're. I'm flabbergasted by, I've noted it was a crawl space in that building for 50 years, how a contractor can go in there and cut a hole in that floor and fall through. He's blindfolded, deaf. That is such a. I'm overwhelmed that we're. Anyway, I'm just, I wouldn't be for that. Thank you, though.
Any other discussion on the motion? Mayor?
Thank you, Chairman Isbell, and congratulations to you and Commissioner Warfield. I just wanted to make the body aware that William Jones could not be here tonight, and so he did send an email. Did all the commissioners get that?
No, I was going to read it.
Okay. I just wanted folks to know that he called also to tell me he would be sending that letter, and that he is not for any cost overruns and is willing to stay where he is. He thought those things like bars on the windows and then the transfer of the roll, I think, I guess there's some type of, yeah, he thought that was already in the plan. So if you don't mind reading that, Mr. Chairman.
We will after this vote.
Sure.
All in favor? Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Voting for to look at the possibility to rescind the contract, is that correct?
To review the possibility and discussion of rescinding the contract. I think that'll do two things. It'll send a message to the contractor and whatnot. But I guess my question is, while we're having discussion, is why could we not have a project manager? How can we have construction going on at a building owned by the county with no supervision? Now, all due respect, I understand the law director's managing it, but any construction project I ever seen, you got to have somebody that's going to head that thing up. And I think that's what we're lacking here, and that's why we're finding ourselves in this situation.
I can answer that question. Roger didn't want it, the mayor didn't want him to have it. I asked that question, it was on the agenda probably two months in a row, asking for volunteers. We don't have money to pay that, so it stayed in my office. I have either myself or somebody from my office goes down there four times a week. Commissioner Jaeger's been down there, we're doing the best we can with what we've got. I don't think it's, any of these cost overruns has anything to do with a project manager being there. That's just my thoughts, they could, they would be there either way. It has nothing to do with a project manager being on the spot all the time. If Commission wants to appropriate funds, to hire a full-time project manager, to stay down there with them, that's totally up to you, but. But, um, uh, that's the history of that decision, and it had, someone had to do it, so I've squeezed it in somehow with all the other things that we do.
Commissioner Fritz.
Sort of goes along with this, but what's sort of interesting is that several years ago, we paid quite a bit of money and had an operational audit performed of the Anderson County Governor on how we could better run our government and save the taxpayers' money, and produced a pretty good-sized document and everything. And what's very interesting, you know, is, uh, I think schools implemented quite a few things and, uh, things that they did, but County Commission didn't do nothing. We just basically ignored just about everything in it. Everything that they recommended, larger and major things that they recommended, we just totally ignored it. And, uh, so, I mean, uh, so I'm sort of interested in when we, after we do the audit of the EMS, are we going to do anything with it, or, or hopefully if it comes back showing that we need to do more for them, but, uh, this, this is a thing, you know, this is documented evidence, this is not, it's me just making, bringing things out, you know, this is documentation, we have it in our files where we did this operational audit, and we didn't do nothing.
Mr. Vow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I'm correct, the motion that's on the floor is to review the current contract to see what options we may have if we decide we want to reverse action on this previous decision, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Who, who's going to be reviewing that? Jay?
I would assume I am.
Okay. Uh, I guess this is a sidebar issue to that, and I, I do believe the right course of action also is to take this before the Budget Committee. I've had an opportunity to walk around down there recently. I am not a construction worker by any way, shape, or form. It takes me an hour to drive a nail, and even then it's not straight. But at the same time, the way that it was explained to me while I was there, my understanding of it, there are some issues that regardless whether we like them or not, they're there, and we're not going to have much of a choice if we're going to utilize that building. I'm okay with those, I understand those are going to come up. The issues that we have some control over and that we can say no to, that we don't feel are necessary, those are certainly the ones I think we need to discuss cutting out. There was also some other changes, and Jay, correct me if I'm wrong, that are going to be cost savings in this project that we didn't know about ahead of time?
That's like the razor wire.
Right, right. Firewall, I believe there was a couple of other issues explained to me.
Firewall is, uh, we're hoping that's going to be significant.
So, maybe when we, Budget starts talking about this, and I urge anybody to come to the Budget Committee meetings, we may see, it may not be that much, there may actually be still the, the overall cost consumed with what we asked for. That's my prayer, anyway.
That's my prayer, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion on the motion? I'm going to read the letter that was addressed to Commission from our court clerk, William T. Jones. "I'm sorry I can't be at tonight's Commission, I have a prior obligation." If you could read this for me. "It has been said that the cost overruns on the Daniel Arthur Division Two project are because I have added several change orders. The things I have asked to be changed were supposed to be in the original plans. A roll-up window being moved from the current location to the new one. Bars on the windows for security of the records being stored there. A countertop and a wall removed in my office. This project will wind up way over budget. I have attached a picture of one of three roof leaks I saw approximately two weeks ago. We might be better to repair the building we are currently in and renegotiate the lease rather than waste a lot of tax dollars on the Daniel Arthur building. Thank you, William Jones." Any other discussion? Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one comment. Regardless of what goes in there, we're going to have to fix the roof.
Right.
If we've got a roof leak, uh, and that's something that would come under Roger, and I think that money ought to be appropriated into his budget to take care of the roof, because it's a county building, and that's, he's over county building. That's, uh, but we should appropriate money, get, get the bid on replacing the roof, let him do that, and, and not include the contractor, because the contractor's going to do this and make a profit. Uh, we can get him to do it and, and take sealed bids on it or whatever, and, and come out cheaper in the long run, but regardless, we're going to replace the roof whether we move general sessions in there or not.
Okay. Commissioner Emmer.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman. We sent bids out, I mean, we had a drawing, all the contractors knew of what they were getting into, and anytime a bid goes out, especially a big job, most contractors hope and pray that they do have change orders, that's where they're going to make their money. They're not really going to make their money off the initial phase of the job, they hope and pray for change orders. But like Commissioner White stated, he knew of that crawl space for 50 years, and the architect and the, the other individuals, the other contractors going down to look at the job, they had the opportunity to do that. So, I'm not for rescinding a contract, I just think that would be, I just think that'd cost the taxpayers. I'm for moving on, but I'm also hold, I'm also for holding the contractor that has the contract liable for what he said that he would do. It's signed. So, as far as changes go, to me, it's not, it's the taxpayers' money, it's not, it's, we're stewards of their money, we're supposed to oversee the best we can, the tax dollars that we, that we receive, and to change the color of the benches because they don't like the color of stain, to me, that's ridiculous. If it's a safety issue, then yes, we need to address it, but it should have been addressed during the time of bid, so I'm not for any changes. Now, if the judge goes in there, now, you, you realize later, too, sometimes you find out after you do it that that's not the way it should have been done, and you think, "Oh, we really ought to do it like this." Well, then I think they would have to live with it for a little while until we can get back on our feet, just because of the shape that we're in in our general fund right now. So, thank you, Chairman.
Any discussion on?
One issue, I'm sorry. Thank you, Commissioner Emmer. Some of these things, um, these additions can be done piecemeal. If you remember, Oak Ridge, uh, City of Oak Ridge has promised us $30,000 a year. Uh, in the future, when that money starts coming in, maybe we can take care of these other concerns. Granted, we don't want to close up a wall and have to reopen it just six months, a year down the line, but there will be additional money coming in to take care of some of the aesthetics that they may want. As my dad says, you may have your wants and your needs mixed up. So, we'll try our best to hold the budget, I promise you that, and we'll bring each and every one of these changes that require appropriations, additional appropriations to the Budget Committee, and allow the Budget Committee to review them with as much information as we have, and then bring, those that come through the Budget Committee will come here for a vote, and, um, well, maybe we'll need to get Mr. Judge Miller and Mr. Jones in here to justify some of the changes. As in regards to, um, Mr. Jones's letter, uh, the roll-up window, there's no doubt, we can address that issue for him. I remember him, um, asking or talking to the architect about that, the meeting we had last Christmas or a couple of weeks before that. It just didn't turn out in the plans, and he didn't catch it, I didn't catch it. Uh, I've told them that, that's on them, and they've got a very small change to accommodate that for him. But he's also requested a wall be demolished. That's significant money there. Uh, when we start talking about demolishing a wall that's cinder block, that's not just a two-by-four with drywall on it, this is a lot of money. Uh, the supports have to be put in place. Uh, on a good side, and I, I do want to point out the good things, uh, the asbestos that we found down there, uh, when we were putting the private bathroom in for the judge, as I emailed you about, that estimate is going to be significantly reduced. Again, they were laying the plumbing to that bathroom and found asbestos in the tile and in the mastic, and the initial estimate was 17.8, it's going to be less than half, and I reported that to you the Sunday before last, so there, there will be some adjustments back and forth, and, uh, we'll have to look at the net effect in the very end. But, anyway, that's the course of action I intend to follow until you, you change it, and, um, you'll have a chance to say yea or nay on each and every one of these adjustments to the contract.
Mr. Warfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During the Finance Committee, Jay, you brought that up about the Oak Ridge and the $30,000 from last fiscal year and the current one. I text, sent a text to Mayor Gooch while we were down there, and I'll just read you what his text is. I asked about both of those figures, last year's and this year's, and I, he said, checking on status, we are closing out our books for fiscal year 2017, so if it has not been paid, it will be. He didn't say win, but he said, "It's not been paid."
I've always known him to be a man of his word, and you heard his promise to us before, so that will help. Uh, again, that, this is a collaborative effort between the county and the City of Oak Ridge, and we're going to try to make it work.
Uh, Jay?
Yes, sir.
If I understand the motion, it's just simply to take a look at the contract and what our options are, it's not a commitment to, to do anything in particular.
I interpret it the same way, sir.
But to look at the legalities, and, so, you know, I, I think that's a reasonable motion.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? We'll try this by voice, vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Let's go to the board and vote.
Uh, one other thing on that issue before I move on, um, we did have Louise McGowan go by, take a tour, she spent a lot of time, and so far, she's impressed with the work. She noted nothing, and believe me, Louise knows ADA inside and out, and, um, so what we have planned down there, uh, again, she was, uh, looking at some things, uh, she has to look at paper, and they're not as built right now, but she had no problems so far, and that's very good. We don't want any of the ADA compliance issues to sneak up with us. Um, moving on, um...
Questions on that?
Yes, sir.
Senior Center's gone, Emery Valley Center's gone, Montessori's going to be gone. Is there anybody in that building besides county?
Yes, we've got two leases right now, Emery Valley Center, they're on the, uh, front portion, uh, to the east side.
And then the...
And United Way is on the front portion. Uh, the back hallway now will be completely vacant as soon as Montessori moves out, and we're fixing to entertain a lease tonight for Bryson's Closet.
That answers the question, I just wanted to know whether it was completely empty.
That's where we're at on those. Okay, the next item I have is Item D, the Senior Center update. Um, a couple of things to report, Mr. Farley is out, um, that's been completed. Uh, number two, the revenues are coming in for the programs, uh, that's excellent, I, I believe Robert helped me with this, but I know over $4,000 has come in since they've taken over, that's wonderful. Um, but one thing, I, I met with, uh, the board or the council and Robert here Thursday before last, and one thing they did express a concern about is the amount of space. They have some issues with space, and, um, they're trying to rearrange things to make it work, but, um, they would like the whole section that's on the front where the driving school is, that is, uh, $800 a month revenue stream to the county as it is right now, they would like that, and, you know, the garage on the back has four bays, I believe, and, um, we had promised that to the Sheriff's Office and the MOU, or just retained it, but, um, they need that. So, they, I've asked them to get all the changes that they'd like to see in that MOU, I don't want to bring it back to you this month, we just amended it last month, but hopefully in October, we'll know where they're at, we'll know whether or not the driving school is going to be staying or moving. Uh, I don't have any indication they'll be moving, but I need a lease signed by them, um, and we'll have to take up their issues again on the adjustment of that MOU, but, uh, I was always under the impression in the five tours I did with them that the space was adequate. Uh, I think every one of y'all did, but as it stands right now, they, they need a little bit more space for some programming rooms, and they would like to move the kitchen from its existing location to that, uh, shop area, if you recall, on the back side. But, um, anyway, that's where that is. Item E is the Tuppertown Community Center. Uh, if you recall, we put a lease together with the, um, Oak Ridge, I mean, with Oliver Springs, um, I guess it's been about five or six years ago, where they would maintain that, uh, as a recreation center, a community center. From the discussions I understand that have occurred, uh, they no longer want this building. They had, they had the mind to surplus it and sell it, uh, but there's a reversionary clause, County Commission had me write that in the deed, it'll come back to County Commission, and we'll have to take action on that in the coming months. Um, I do want you to remember, we have a request from the rescue squad for somewhere to put, uh, an office or a station down towards Wind Rock Mountain so they can be a little bit quicker with their mountain rescue gear. That may be something to consider there. Uh, we may declare it surplus if County Commission wants to and put it out for sale. Um, and I can see Jerry Creasy does not want that, but, uh, anyway, that Tuppertown issue will come back, uh, to you in the coming months, and we need to decide where we, what do we want to do, and, uh, Commissioner Scott, if you don't mind, if you can explore that at Fire Commission with the rescue squad and see if that building may be something that they can utilize, uh, to quicken the response to Wind Rock Mountain. Uh, any other questions I can handle for you tonight, concerns that you may have, I'd be glad to... That's all I have for you, I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Mayor?
I could have something, Jay, I'm just going to report on your operations for that surplus property tomorrow, depending on that.
Uh, that's not coming up. You're talking, I just put the map together, and that's all I've got, that won't be back until operations. Anything else?
I'd like to ask you a little question. Oh, Mr. Tracy over here. Jay, help...
Yes, sir.
Did we make a mistake by not going with Tracy's motion to explore our options? In your legal opinion?
Well, I don't think, honestly, you need a motion on that. I'll go back and go over that contract, and I'll be willing to answer any questions Commissioner Wondell has or anybody else next month, and, um, uh, we'll just be prepared, that's something I should have for you without a motion, and, but I can tell you that when you sign a contract to something like that, there is a lot of cost upfront for the contractor to get involved in it, so the theory there is you're, you're in breach of the contract that you've signed. Sometimes you can get out of that arrangement in paying what's called quantum merit, that's the cost of goods and services performed to date, uh, but there's no reason for that contractor, that would be totally discretionary at this point, uh, and they may push us to the point where saying that we would have to pay the total amount, and that's where that would not be a good business decision for the county to pay the total amount and still not make the renovations to that building.
That's where I was trying to come from.
But I'll be ready, Commissioner Wondell, and, um, to explore those, uh, next month, and, uh, if you want to call me at the office, I'll, I'll look at it in the next few days, but I believe it was a, a straight-up contract where we defined the scope, they bid on it, they were the low bid, we brought the contract back, County Commission approved it, we signed it, and they went to work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wondell?
Yes, Jay?
Yes, sir.
Do you know, just off the top of your head, how many folks are working on that project now, the contractor?
Uh, it varies, they have their project manager down there that's act like a foreman. Um, they have a crew of maybe three or four, but then they have subs, like right now, the heating and air sub is in there, a painter's in there, um, drywall individuals in there, and it depends, uh, any given time, what subs are, are working, but usually you can go by there and find at least 10 a day, um, working on the project.
Yeah, when I'm in town, I, I drive by there every day, and I've seen one or two trucks there, it's not to say there's not 12 in there, but, um, I just thought it would be a much larger scope project with much more energy, uh, you know, it seemed like there's a lot of motivation around this board here, committee, to, to make that happen, and, uh, when I drive by, and again, I, as Commissioner Vow said, I'm not a construction man either, but I do place a lot of guys on construction projects.
Yes, sir.
And I can tell you this, when they're hired, their job is to finish the project, and no disrespect to Mr. Brady, I know he'll do a good job, but, uh, I, I just, I just think that if... How many hours were spent last week on it? Who knows? How many hours were spent last week on it? Who knows?
Well...
You know, if we're paying by the hour, $150 an hour, don't know if that's the number. We don't know what that is, but I'm sure those are things Budget Committee will look at. And I don't have any specific questions other than for you. I mean, I've already said tonight, I don't have a list of questions to call you about. I just want to know if...
Your options.
There's an option there.
And I'll certainly be glad to brief you next month on that. And believe me, the amount of workforce, the amount of men, women, working on that job at any given time is dictated by that contractor. They're the ones that sign the contract for 120 days. And I've told them they're welcome to work 24 hours a day if needed on that project. There's no reason they can't. But they set the pace of the work. But if any of you are in the area and you want to take a look at it, please, feel free. I've told them the county commissioners and officials would be visiting them. There's no problem at all if you stop in and take a look at it. And Dustin is their man on the ground down there. Just ask to see Dustin, or call me, and I'll come down there and help you with any questions you have. That's all I have for you tonight, and thank you for the opportunity to be with you.
Okay, I've been asked for a short recess, which means we will get exactly 10 minutes, so we'll start back at 8:53.
First off, I want to speak on the cash and fund balance report. As of August 31st, our cash is 5.2 million, which is comparable to the last three years. Our unassigned fund balance is at 1.8 million, which is below the 4 million, which requires two-thirds vote for budget amendments. So, if anybody has any questions about the cash and fund balance report. Mr. Wondell? Thank you. All right. Moving on to the budget amendments, starting with Group Two, appropriations for school. Do you want to approve as an individual or as a group?
Motion approved as a group.
Second.
Have a motion second. All in favor to approve as a group? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This will be an appropriation, so we'll go to the board and vote on each one of these. Is that correct?
As a group.
Oh.
As a group.
For all of them as a group. All right. Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
Okay, Group Three is transfers from school. There's only one, so can prove as a...
Voice vote. This is transfers, voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, Group Five is appropriations from non-school.
Motion approved.
Have a motion second. Any discussion?
Takes a board vote.
Need to go to the board and vote. Motion passes.
All righty, Group Six is transfers, non-school. Prove as a group.
Have a motion second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor to prove as a group? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, and the last budget amendment is from the general fund, unassigned fund balance. It's for the HR department.
Have a motion second. This needs to be a board vote?
Yes, sir.
Let's go to the board and vote. One no vote. Motion passes.
That's all I have. Thank you, guys.
Purchasing report.
Good evening. We just have three contracts and one contract renewal for y'all's review tonight.
Have a motion second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, and there was also one contract renewal. There's three contracts and one renewal. Y'all usually don't approve renewals, but for some reason, the contract for the American Fidelity Administrative Services with the Finance Department, the letter from Jay last year approving it said if we extended it further, it would require commission approval.
Have a motion second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next is operating committee report by Chairman Wondell.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question for purchasing.
Catherine.
Catherine, yes. That's okay. I apologize. I wasn't quick enough. Under item two, it says specifications for new Metford fire truck. You're adding the verbiage. I guess my question is, how much funds are set aside this year? Do you know for the fire truck? Is it half a truck, or is it the whole thing?
I believe it's half. And the RFP responses won't come in until after July 1st.
All right, thank you. That's appreciated, Catherine.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Operations Committee met on September 11th. There was discussion of 441 project. That was brought to us by Mayor Michael Lovely and Michael Foster, Rocky Top City Manager. And the mayor, as I said, Michael Lovely, was for discussion. Upon a motion made by Commissioner Alderson, seconded by Commissioner Emmert, for Mayor Frank to draft a letter in support to Commissioner Robert Martinneau of the Department of Environment and Conservation. Motion carried. Commissioner Alderson amended the motion to include more personal letter to be sent to Lieutenant Governor McNally, seconded by Commissioner Emmert, and passed. Next item is Marlowe Fire Department properties. We have that package in front of us. Commissioner White, I don't know if you have any questions you'd like to ask at this time, but I assume we're just still looking into it, and we have the information in front of us to review. Did you have any further specific questions?
Thank you, sir. The same request that I had before. I would like to see this commission declare that property surplus.
I mean, if you don't mind, sir, I'll read the motion that was in the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner White requested the Marlowe Volunteer Fire Department and Donovan School properties be declared surplus to donate back to the fire department. Motion was made by Commissioner Isbell, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Commissioner Isbell amended the motion from surplus to lease to forward to full commission without a recommendation, and that motion carried.
I would like to make a motion, then, that we declare that property surplus.
Second.
Have a motion second. Any discussion?
There's still a lingering question on the donation of real estate that the mayor has asked for. So, I thought we were not moving on that tonight. You just asked for some more information, so we're going to need to take this up under operations next month before we move on it. It's, we all know we can donate to 501(c)(3)'s in a monetary fashion. We did that for years, but the mayor's issue is can we donate real estate to a 501(c)(3)? We did pass a private act to take care of the Emery Valley Center, but that wouldn't encompass this issue. That was strictly for educational purposes.
The language doesn't reflect the intent. It's not whether it's surplus or not with the motion, it's whether it's donate or lease.
And they've said, you have a copy of the email I received. They're not interested in the ground lease that was proposed by Commissioner McNally. Does not help them. Well, they don't want to go that route. They don't want to invest in a building that they're just leasing. It's not the banker's cause, we thought.
So, Mr. Chairman, I will, on Mr. Yeager's advice, I withdraw that motion.
You want to defer? Make a motion to defer?
We'll bring it back at operations and take care of the mayor's issue, and we can make a more informed decision then.
Then I withdraw my motion.
We have a motion to defer to see the second also. So, we have a motion to... So we have a motion to defer to Operations and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's why it's a defer motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jay. Uh, thank you, Commissioner White. Next item is Bryson's Closet. Jay, did we want to take action? I know you left some information for us. I'll read the motion that was made in the operation meeting. Upon motion made by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Yeager to ask County Attorney to draft a five-week lease for $1 on rooms 42, 44, 46, 42A, and 46A at the Emery Valley Center to be used for the coat drive, motion carried.
We have, you have that, I sent it to you yesterday afternoon.
Bryson's Closet lease.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the lease for five weeks.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Robert, I'm sorry, uh, can you have that lady come by Catherine's office and execute that lease at her convenience? Thank you.
Next, Mr. Chairman, we had, uh, several items brought to our attention by the mayor, Frank, uh, we had a motion by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner McCamey, Resolution 17-09-648 in support of the Anderson County Solid Waste Supplying for a Grant to Replace Concrete at the Green Valley Convenience Center. Got a mo?
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next was another resolution, uh, made by, motion made by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Emmert, was Resolution 17-09-649 in support of Anderson County Solid Waste Supplying for a Grant to Supplement Education and Outreach at Anderson County Convenience Centers. I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Next res- resolution that was discussed was a motion by Commissioner Alderson, seconded by Commissioner Mead, Resolution 17-09-650 in support of asking T.DOT to consider inclusion of the Greenway Planning and Development Plans for the Edgemore Road Project. I so move.
Have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Next was a couple items brought to us by the Law Director, Mr. Yeager. Firefighters Memorial upon motion made by Commissioner Alderson, seconded by Commissioner Emmert to forward to full commission for approval. I so move.
Have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
One, one clarification on that. I believe we discussed in the meeting, that would be firefighters, EMS, and police officers.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Jay, you're correct, that was discussed. Do we need to ma- make any amendments to that? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Right, we need to make that, anything in emergency services, if you've got the issues, go out and stuff like that.
I think anyone that, um, donates their professional self, or their time to mercy services should be honored on this plaque.
I agree, Ted, I'll say when you send it through, when you send it through.
Yeah, um, that's great. I'd make it as broad as possible.
Let's make that part of the motion.
I may be missing something.
Let's go back and make that part of the motion.
You, you want to amend that motion? We can certainly do so, Commissioner Alderson, I think that's a great idea.
I mean, that, uh, emergency services workers.
Second.
Have a motion second, everybody? Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to amend is approved.
Then we'll also cover the, uh, rescue workers at the plants, correct? That's been brought to my attention, so that'd be everyone in the county, including the plants. Thank you.
Next item was Noise Resolution upon motion made by Commissioner Emmert, seconded by Commissioner Yeager to accept amendments to the Noise Resolution and forward to full commission for approval. I so move.
Second.
Have a motion second, any discussion, Fritz, Commissioner Fritz?
Mr. Yeager, I got, uh, several phone calls from, uh, some, some systems out in the Plaxton area, back off of, uh, Strider Road, back in that area, and, uh, there's a, as I hate to say it, there's a, uh, church camp. And, uh, late at night, they do a lot of the stuff, and, uh, loudspeakers and bands and stuff like that, and a lot of the neighbors are saying, at late hours of the night, you know, uh, uh, it gets very loud, and, I mean, I mean, very loud, where there's sometimes even stuff in their house vibrates. Does this, uh?
Yes, that's always been in there, the, uh, that's.
Cause they, they said they've been told by the Sheriff's Department that, uh, it does not, uh, uh, is non-enforceable, they can't cover it, uh, and, uh, and it's.
We're, we're going back and doing some more in-service training, it does incorporate that type of activity, that's been in there all along.
They said they hated to change, uh, complain about, uh, church activities, but they said it's just, uh.
If it's unusual, unnecessary, untimely, uh, yes, it could be covered, and the way the Sheriff's Office has been handling these cases for years, is to simply make the individuals aware that they can be cited for this, and that goes a long ways, and they usually cease the operations at that point, it's just another option, or alternatives they can to handle these type situations, but, uh, please, uh, call the Sheriff's Office, uh, promise to do some in-service training, to go over this again for them. Uh, we did initial training on it, but they've got a lot of new officers, men and women there, and they may not be as familiar with it, but we'll handle that in their annual, uh, in-service training, and we'll go over that, but the quick answer is, number one, they're welcome to call me or the Sheriff's Office and, uh, handle it for them.
Cause they said with the camp, they got a lot of loudspeakers throughout the whole place, and, you know, it just gets very, very loud at, uh, times.
Thank you, we'll be glad to ha- take a look at it.
Think we got a vote on that motion? Mr. Chairman?
Yes. We need to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
Lastly, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, was a motion by Commissioner Creasy, seconded by Commissioner Yeager, to approve the 2018 County Government Holiday Schedule as presented with the addition of one floating holiday. I so move.
Second.
Have a motion and second, any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Val?
I'm going to vote for this, but the last time we, we brought this up for discussion, if y'all recall, there was a, a large debate over, uh, I just want to make it clear to the county employees, uh, this is not necessarily in lieu of a pay raise, meaning that this is all they're going to get. I want to thank Commissioner Meredith in our Budget Committee, who, uh, has passed a motion, and we're working on, uh, possible, possible raise, and I'll throw that in there as well, it is possible, it's not definite, but, uh, I got a lot of phone calls after that last debate, uh, employees misunderstood what we were trying to do, so I just want to make that for the record, so that they'll know, this does not mean they're definitely not getting a raise. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Commissioner Val, uh, I made sure that portion of the motion did not read "in lieu of pay."
Yeah, that's true.
We have a motion and second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mayor.
Did I forget something, Mayor?
It was, unless I missed it, the open checkbook project.
Uh, that was a discussion item, it wasn't an actual action item, but certainly.
I thought we had a motion for, that authorized me to, I think Commissioner Mead actually made the motion, um, to authorize me to investigate or, yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're right, Mayor, there, I'll, I'll read the motion, uh, upon motion made by Commissioner Mead, seconded by Commissioner Creasy in support of the mayor looking into the open checkbook project, and that motion carried, it was not forwarded, but you're certain.
Okay, okay, okay. And then also, um, I just wanted to explain on, um, for Commissioner White, my question on the surplus issue, uh, I'm, and I did email Stephanie Fox at Marlowe, my concern was if we go to a surplus and we cannot transfer to them, that it would become a bid scenario. And so I know they don't want to get into a bid situation on that property, so what we did, for instance, with Emery Valley Center, um, um, and, and I don't know if that was because it was a county-owned building or what, but we did have to get a private act on that, and so I think Jay's researching, um, if that applies here. So that's, I wanted to clarify that. And then also, um, here tonight, um, i- in case anyone at full commission wanted to ask some questions, we know the District Attorney General is going to come back to the Operations Committee, but also under Operations Committee, we did discuss the opiate litigation, and John Spragan and Jonathan Taylor are both here, if anyone does happen to have questions, um, on that litigation from the county side of things, so I just thought I would.
Yeah.
Draw your attention that they were here, if anyone had questions.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the mayor is correct, uh, uh, we did defer the op- opiate legis- uh, litigation discussion for 30 days, but certainly, as the mayor's pointed out, we have the gentlemen here from, uh, uh, the, the firms that would be happy to talk to you about it, uh, but we did not forward that to this body to take up tonight, and we've, as it, we said, we deferred that for 30 days, uh, and we'll certainly bring it back to the Operations and pick it back up next meeting.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner?
I just wanted to acknowledge, Commissioner Wondell is our new Chairman of Operations, we're excited about it, so.
I'm just going to.
Uh, no, no, sir, no, sir.
Doing a great job.
Glad to have you.
Appreciate the vote, I'm, I'll do my best, uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Did you all want to speak for a minute about anything?
Just one minute, I know we're at the end of your meeting here.
One minute.
Thank you very much, members of the commission, my name's John Spragons, I'm from Nashville, I'm at Leifke, Bracer, Hyman, and Bernstein. Uh, my colleague Mark Chalice was in front of the Operations Committee, and we look forward to the opportunity to come back. I was talking to General Clark in the hall, and we're actually, I think it'll be a good presentation for the Operations Committee, and in the meantime, uh, we may find some ways that we can work together, so, um, we look forward to it, this is obviously a huge problem facing not just Anderson County, but all over East Tennessee, all over the state of Tennessee, all over the country. I just got an email tonight about Portland, Maine, just hired, um, a firm to represent them in opioid litigation, so, um, this is important work, I appreciate the commission's focus on it, and hopefully we'll have some more news to report, uh, at the Operations Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Just, just as a matter of clarification, when you say hire, there's no cost involved to the county?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, and we'll take that up again, under Operations. Next is old business. You don't want to speak again, Commissioner?
No, sir.
Okay. Any new business? Motion adjourned.
Excuse me, I did hit the button.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. I just want to remind people, there is a website that you, or an app that you can get on your phones, it's called Zello. It's Z-E-L-L-O. Um, what it does is, by downloading the app, it will turn your phone into a walkie-talkie should the cell towers be down, um, such as out in, in Sevier County when they had the fires, or even, um, down south when they had the hurricanes, many people use the Zello app, and it allowed them to get help and/or let people know where to find them. Please download it, there is no cost for it.
Catherine?
Thank you.
I just have one more item that didn't go through the Purchasing Committee. It's a five-year contract with Comcast to install new circuit and provide the county with internet services at a speed of one gig per second. The RFP for the contract was approved in last month's commission meeting, the reason it didn't go through the Purchasing Committee was poor planning on my part, because we didn't open their responses to the RFP until the day after Purchasing Committee met, but I didn't want to delay this, if possible, until next month, because.
I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, Commissioner Fritz?
Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, sorry, I said.
Commissioner McCamey on this.
Brian, are you working with Comcast on something? Is this something we need to do?
This is that.
That's, that's it, okay.
It's going to save a lot of money, that's why we didn't want to delay.
Right, okay, I, I, I knew that, I talked with Brian, and, uh, there's quite a significant amount of money that we're going to save by doing this, but I didn't know if this had the same thing.
Great job, Brian. Very good job.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, Commissioner Fritz?
I was just going to say, we didn't get started until seven o'clock, but you did a great job giving us out.
Thank you, appreciate, appreciate each and every one of you, I know what you go through, and, so I appreciate you, thank you.